Okay.
All right, welcome everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Corleville City Council to order. It is May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Knutson?
Here.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Quinn?
Sorry, here.
Peterson?
Here.
Goodrich?
Here.
All council members except council member Quinn are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city administrator, the city attorney, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Knutson. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Okay, item number four. So I do have a proclamation here for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, but I think we're going to wait until our colleague returns from her trip to read this one. I do want to acknowledge that May is AAPI Heritage Month, but she usually brings a group of friends with her that are associated with the Asian Fest that is going to be held this weekend. So we want to make sure they are here with us so they may accept the proclamation. So I would entertain a motion to table the reading of this proclamation to the next or for the next meeting. Could I get that motion?
So moved.
Moved by Goodrich?
Seconded.
Seconded by Vogelzang. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It is approved. Okay, so we will table this and we will read it at the next meeting. All right, on to the next agenda item. Community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes and we do reserve the right to adjust both the overall comment time and the individual speaking time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So is there anyone that would like to speak to us this evening or address us? Okay, come on up, please sign in, state your name, and tell us what's on your mind.
Thank you very much, Mayor Foster, members of council. Good evening. My name is Dan Feltes. This is Carlette Washington. We are here in our capacity as board members of Community Crisis Services. Community Crisis Services, as you may know, is a local nonprofit that serves the greater Johnson County and providing critical and needed and timely mental health services, as well as serving the food needs of those food insecure families around Johnson County, including in Corleville, not just Iowa City. So we're here tonight in particular to elevate and surface at this public hearing and testify publicly before the mayor and the council about the food needs that are facing the community right now. And Carlette will talk in detail about that.
Inflation is weighing heavily on a lot of households and budget cuts are ubiquitous. These factors only serve to exacerbate food insecurity in our communities. The summer months will be especially difficult for families with children, given the absence of a free lunch program in some of our communities. Imagine this, a full grocery cart of food weighs about two hundred pounds. However, the food bank can only provide thirty-nine pounds of food to feed two hundred people a week. Communities' current purchasing budget is not sufficient to adequately sustain a family for a week. We need a sixty percent increase in monthly funding to increase the amount of food, the quality, and nutritional value that they provide for the people we serve. Dan?
Thank you, Carlette. And just to add to what Carlette said, as we all know, when the pandemic hit, food needs were something everybody talked about. Those needs haven't gone away. They've actually are greater now. They're greater now. And as Carlette mentioned, the summer food assistance program that's been offered to the state of Iowa has been rejected. So Community Crisis Services needs help. The food bank needs help. We'd respectfully encourage the mayor and the council to consider if there's any room in the budget to make an appropriation to help with that food needs. Even a little bit will go a long way to help these families who need food, especially this summer. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. We appreciate your, the opportunity to provide this input. Thank you.
Thank you both, and thank you for your work for such an important organization. Thank you very much. Okay, next item, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four budget amendment. This item is to amend the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four budget for revenues and expenditures. The public hearing on this will be May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution setting a public hearing on the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four budget amendment is introduced for adoption by council member Knutson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Questions or comments on this? All right, could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Vogelzang?
Yeah, aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. All ayes with Quinn absent. Next item, bonds. And these bonds are for financing the Fifth Street improvements, Twelfth Avenue to Twentieth Avenue, and refinancing other bonds. Could I have that resolution?
Resolution authorizing and approving loan agreements confirming the sale providing for the issuance of the general obligation bonds, Series two thousand and twenty-four A, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same. Introduced for adoption by council member Vogelzang, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions, comments, or discussion on this item? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. All ayes. Next item, addendum to agreement to serve as dissemination agent for secondary market disclosure. This will allow Piper Sandler and Co. to provide secondary market disclosure dissemination services. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving the addendum to that certain agreement to serve as dissemination agent for secondary market disclosure with Piper Sandler and Co. Introduced for adoption by council member Peterson, seconded by?
Seconded.
Seconded by Vogelzang. Questions or comments? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. All ayes. Next item, Iowa Thriving Community application. This Iowa Economic Development Authority and Iowa Finance Authority program is to further incentivize targeted housing development. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution of support for an application to the Iowa Thriving Communities Program is introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. So I think it's worth just kind of explaining a little bit about what this program is. I think there are some similarities between this program and the workforce housing tax program that we're going to be talking about in the next items. I think this one allows for more points on the scoring of those applications, correct?
Yes, Mayor, that's right. The Iowa Thriving Communities Program, if Corleville is designated, could qualify applicants next year for additional points on the workforce housing tax credits or low-income housing tax credits, or possibly both. So, and that would be for next year's applicants, and this application will go in tomorrow.
Okay, and that is, it's, these are very competitive, correct?
They are very competitive, and this is the second year for this program. And I think we're just really hopeful that it would help Corleville applicants in the future be able to be successful and generate more housing units in Corleville.
Awesome. All right, thank you for that overview, because they are very, they're, they're connected, they're different, but they are related to each other, this one and then the next agenda items.
Exactly, yes. The workforce housing tax credits is a program we've been working with for several years, and we've had some success with that. It's gotten more competitive as times gone on. So this would help our local developers access those funds more easily.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Any other questions or discussion on this item?
What is an Iowa thriving community?
This is a designation that Economic Development Authority and Iowa Finance Authority came up with last year. And last year, they, I think maybe eight or ten communities were designated as Iowa thriving communities. It means that you are working hard and being innovative in developing residential areas and new housing units, trying to meet the state. The state believes they have a shortage of forty thousand housing units in the next ten years, so just trying to fill that gap.
Yeah.
And there's a-
Generally growing communities, but not, doesn't have to be.
It would not have to be. It would just have to be communities, they're looking for innovation and support for housing development.
Yeah, there's a list of criteria, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, they're looking at strategic and leadership and initiatives. They're looking at how we financially support, what partnerships we have, and whether our, you know, look at our target area and how suitable that is.
Just because of overall quality of life.
Yeah, that's part of it, too, and how well we work with the school districts and, you know, are there, are there trades jobs? Are there trades, is there training for trades? So we score pretty well in a lot of those areas. Is there a growing workforce need? Looks at all those things.
How long would it be good for?
Just next year's applications.
What's that?
Just next year's applications. It would just help for next year's applications. So one round of each.
One-year designation.
It's one year each, yep.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your work on this.
Thank you.
Awesome. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, could I have the roll call?
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. All ayes. Next item, workforce housing tax credit. Now, there are two parts to this agenda item, and both of these would, items would support the applications for the workforce housing tax credits. So could I have the first resolution read, please?
Resolution approving an option agreement with IRL Parkview Investments LLC. Introduced for adoption by council member Knutson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item?
Can we get an update quick on the location of this apartment?
Yes, this is, this is, the Parkview properties are the residential units or buildings that are north of the, north of the Marriott, sorry, excuse me, Hyatt parking ramp and the, it's east of Van Mauer up towards the interstate to, they're up there, Iowa River Landing Place goes in there.
So those two buildings were hodge?
Yep. And this will be the, this one will be ones right across the street from the one that is the taller of the two buildings.
Okay.
So the street's already in, it'd be just be on the, almost the mirror image on the other side of the street.
So, yeah, so it'll be south of Van Mauer, then?
Well, it'll be east of Van Mauer.
East.
So you take the same road, I River Landing Place, and go in front of Van Mauer, keep going, I River Landing Place will run into the, will end right where those apartment complex or these residential complexes are.
Okay.
It's the furthest northeast corner of?
Correct.
And just a, kind of a general question about the workforce housing tax credits. Can you remind me, did they used, when they were scoring the applications, were they looking at occupa, or vacancy rates as part of the scoring, or was that part of it a long time ago?
Used to be part of that. I mean, you had to have a housing needs analysis for your area, and that, part of that would be vacancy rates.
Okay.
Which obviously are areas, depending on which way you look at it, either scores very well or poorly, because we have a high, a low vacancy rate.
Right, that's, that's what I, that was what I was curious about, is how much that factored into the, because we do have a pretty low vacancy.
Yeah, they, they're looking at vacancy rates. They're also looking at how many of these you've received before. They're also looking at how many are jobs being created. And in that housing assessment, that really combines all of that in what your area is projected to need.
Yeah.
So for this specific project, this isn't much of an ask, in my view, a thousand dollars for forty-two units. Will they be asking for additional TIF money from this area?
Yes.
And how much would that add up to?
That is part of the development agreement that they would be asking for.
Yeah, so when we did the first two buildings, it was set at seventy-five percent, but there is no, there's no set for the third building. So that would be something we negotiate here. They're probably going to wait to see what they, whether they get these, these, you know, they can get up to a million dollars of tax credits for this project. So that would obviously affect how much, and remember, in the first two, they put all the roads-
They put the roads in. In this building, they may not need-
Right now, they don't need to put very much, they have to put a little chunk of the road in to get to their, where they drive underneath the building to park, but not a lot.
One of the things they're interested in is having a higher amount but shortening the amount of time to match the opportunity zones, which there, anybody is eligible for in Corleville South Interstate eighty, basically, from nine sixty-five to the Iowa River, which is a program that if you, if you maintain a property for ten years and sell it, then you get, you are charged no capital gains.
So what's that mean for the TIF support?
Well, what that-
Be a hundred percent for five years or something?
They were shortening up because previously it was a longer time period.
Twenty.
It was twenty, and so they said, well, we can actually shorten that and match it to the opportunity zone, because that would give them the opportunity, if they wanted to, to dispose of the property at ten years. I mean, that's, in our area, that could be a fairly significant advantage, the opportunity zones.
Because they'd appreciate most of the building off in ten years.
And then you would have a large capital gains.
That would then be tax-free-
Would be tax-free.
At the federal or state level?
Federal.
Federal level.
The, yeah. The theory, you know, about that is to create, to give an incentive for the investment, but also an incentive to hold the investment. Previously, you would do it, a property owner would do a tax-free exchange, right? They would, and this would allow you to actually sell the property, not have to reinvest in another parcel.
Okay. Cross that bridge when we get to it, but I-
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Vogelzang?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. All ayes with Quinn absent. And could we have the second resolution read, please?
Resolution of support of the application of IRL Parkview Investments LLC for funding via the workforce housing's tax credit program and pledging city monies for the same. Introduced for adoption by council member Vogelzang, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Questions on this one? Roll call.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. All ayes with Quinn absent. Next item, fire department shift fee schedule. This creates a fee schedule to compensate volunteer members and duty officers who meet the in-station department staffing requirements for one shift a week. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution approving a lease termination agreement with MVCD, excuse me, I missed that. I was in a hurry.
Happens, happens to me, too.
Resolution establishing compensation to be paid to be designated members of the Corleville Fire Department pursuant to Section thirty-five point oh four of the Corleville Code of Ordinances as amended. Introduced for adoption by council member Peterson, seconded by?
Seconded.
Seconded by Knutson. Questions or comments?
For the audience, maybe we could have our fire chief speak about this?
That would be excellent.
It's a stipend, I would call it, almost.
So, yes, this, if you'll remember right, when we went through budget, well, over a year ago now, the one that took effect in July, we discussed this a little bit, but our goal is to try to staff the stations in the evening hours, between the two stations, having somewhere between six and eight people there. So we've been working on this, and we decided that having a stipend program would assist accomplishing that. So we took a couple different budget line items and combined them, and one of them being the officers pay, because this schedule takes into consideration, as you get certificates and get your officers, you get a little bit more per, per that shift. It is only one shift a week, and it gives us the ability to, you know, grow in the future. The second part was our LoSAP program, which we've had since two thousand. And if you have done your shift and earn your shift stipend, you'll automatically qualify for that LoSAP, which is a hundred dollars for each year that you are on the department. We put into an Edward Jones account for you as retirement. Now, you can take that money out right away if you want, or you can leave it in there and let it grow. It's up to them. So our goal with keeping those separate is every year, the state of Iowa gets a bill introduced for a volunteer retirement program for the, for the volunteers in the state, and this would line up really well with that if they ever do pass that bill, and then we'd already have that program in place, so.
Excellent, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for the chief, or just general questions about this agenda item?
Fifteen dollar enough of an incentive?
Well, it's really, it's more of appreciation than incentive. It's not going to probably make anybody say, I'm going to go join the fire department. It's kind of a reward for doing it. It starts at fifteen. So our newest members, we just started a class, I think there's sixteen in class right now. It started at the beginning of April. So they, as soon as they get their gear, they will be spending the night, and they'll get the fifteen, and then as they get their Fire One certificate, it's two fifty more, and then their EMT is four. So it goes all the way up to the thirty-seven. We probably have, probably two or three members that'll be at the thirty-seven amount. So it's incentive for you to get those certifications and stick around. And then the LoSAP is a hundred dollars for each year, so the longer you stay, the more you earn there also.
We have one of the officers, right, that's over thirty years now?
Uh, yeah, Assistant Chief Horning will be at thirty years in August, so.
You know, and that's not a lot, but three thousand a year, and you add that up over years. I mean, at least that's something. And it's really designed to try to encourage firefighters to stay longer, because that's one of the biggest issues that we have, is the longevity.
Yeah, so Assistant Chief Horning actually mentions that every, every year of the new class when they start. He has been, since two thousand is when we started the program, and he's put that money every year away into his son's college education. So he's, he's really hoping he gets a scholarship, so he'll have that money. So, but anyway, but he tells everybody, put it in there and leave it alone. It's, it just sets it, and we used to do a savings bond program, but when the government changed that program to where the, you need to have social security tied, social security number tied to the actual check, which of course, the check comes to the city, that doesn't work, we started the Edward Jones account. And so you, like I said, we set the account up, do all the paperwork for them, and then they contact them directly, and they can leave that money there, invest it how they're, they like, or they can take it out and do whatever they want with it. But in the case of Bill, he's left it in there, and I don't remember how much he said he had, but with the interest and everything he's earned since two thousand, he's, he really encourages the folks to do that, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Could I get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. All ayes with Quinn absent. Next item, Iowa River Landing license agreements. We have two parts to this agenda item. The first part would terminate the lease at nine twenty East Second Avenue, Unit D one-one-one, as of May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Could I have that resolution, please?
Resolution approving a lease termination agreement with MVCD Enterprises LLC, doing business as Funky Zebras Boutique of Corleville. Introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by?
Seconded.
Seconded by Peterson. Questions or comments?
Yeah, this worked out to everybody's benefit. Funky Zebras was interested in terminating their lease, and we had another business that was very interested in that space. And so this opportunity gave us, gave us the opportunity to accommodate both.
Excellent.
Essentially the same rate?
Pardon?
Essentially the same lease rate?
Um, actually, it's higher.
A little bit higher, an increase, a little bit more?
Yeah.
So really, everybody's advantaged.
All right, any other questions? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. All ayes with Quinn absent. And the next agenda item is a three-year license agreement for that same space, nine twenty East Second Avenue, D one eleven. Could I have that resolution?
Resolution approving a license agreement with Kendra Scott LLC. Introduced for adoption by council member Knutson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Vogelzang. Any questions or comments on this one?
The mayor tells me it's a good store.
It is. It is a really good fit, actually. I'm very excited, as is, as are some of my family members, my mom and my sister. I even told them, guess what we're voting on tonight? So it is, it's a jewelry shop, it's a national brand, and it is a brand that is, is very well-known. So I think it'll be a really great fit for, for the area. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Vogelzang.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with win absent. Next item, single stream recycling. So this is very exciting, because in order to implement our new single stream recycling program, we have to amend and make some changes to our own code of ordinances. So, could I have that ordinance read, please?
Ordinance number 2024-1002, and ordinance amending the City of Corleville Code of Ordinances 2011 as previously amended regarding a single stream recycling for first consideration by Councilmember Vogelzang, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or discussion?
Yeah, we are on schedule that residents will start getting their carts this month, and then next month in June, the collection will actually start, so you'll have an opportunity to see the equipment later in the work session.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Resolution is approved, I'm sorry, the ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes with win absent. Next item, MOU, Memorandum of Understanding. This MOU obligates UIHC to pay the cost for upsizing and capacity improvements that are necessary to receive the wastewater discharge from their property in North Liberty, and this is where they are building a new facility. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution approving a memorandum of understanding by and between the City of Corleville and the University of Iowa on behalf of University of Iowa Healthcare, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Questions?
Yeah, this is, agreement will actually get the refunding, or the money when, 30 days from when this is executed. And we have an agree, had an agreement and do have an agreement with North Liberty, this is our part of the, of the wastewater that we will take. If you recall, Scanlon Farms, North Liberty is taking, and then this is, we'll be getting rid of a lip station there. The reason that we asked University of Iowa Healthcare to reimburse us is because in that agreement and all the design work that we had done with North Liberty, we never anticipated this large of a facility, and so actually sewer pipes have to be enlarged to accommodate that facility.
I'm curious about the timing. I mean, we've been working on this project for a couple of years now to get the sewer lines all the way up there, right, and the MOU is just now in, or getting, getting approved. It seemed like that should have happened before we made all those.
Well, this is part of the actual oversizing, and like other agreements that we've had with the University of Hospitals, it took us a significant amount of time, they've had the agreements, and so I suggested they really needed, before we start this last piece of construction, that they get it signed, and the business manager did accommodate.
So ballparking, what, I, I forget the dollar amounts of those projects, but how much are they paying for?
So the upsizing is, well, the upsizing is 344,000 they're gonna pay, and the capacity improvements that we'll need is another $572,000, so, so they're gonna pay us over $900,000 just for their piece of the puzzle. I believe the cost of that sewer is 400, 4 million? Phase two? 4 million, so they're paying 20 to 25%. Well, the, the capacity one's not directly that, but the, they're paying a significant portion of that.
Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with win absent. Next item, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
So moved.
All of it? Which, can, which, the whole, can you say the entire?
I would make a motion to consider a motion, to approve the consent calendar as a whole.
All right. Moved by Peterson. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Vogelzang.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved, all ayes. City administrators report.
Yes, this last weekend, we had several opportunities for people to continue to clean up around their home in the recycle swap meet and the shredding program, and I did get several comments, especially about the shredding program, that they appreciate us continuing to offer that, and the line was very long to get into that, so. And we had several volunteers and appreciate the people that are volunteering to help put those programs together. And then this week is mayor's cleanup week, and so we've got a couple days left for people that still have their garbage to go on their normal garbage day. This last Friday, Congresswoman Miller Meeks took the opportunity to visit Corleville and specifically look at some of our infrastructure projects that we have going currently. She also officially last week submitted the request for Deer Creek Intersection on Highway 6 to the Appropriations Committee, and we'll hear back from that formally by the end of the year, hopefully. So we appreciate those, that assistance as well. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you. Mayor's report, I don't have much, but I am just going to share some information about Corleville Asian Fest, since our colleague is, is traveling this, this, she's been traveling the last couple of weeks. She actually was visiting Vietnam and had a, I was following her on social media, had a great time, it looked like. So I wanted to make sure that the present, that, you know, she was here to receive the proclamation that, that I'm going to read, because she is one of the organizers of Corleville Asian Fest, and that is going to be happening this Saturday, May 18th, 12 to 7 p.m. at S.T. Morrison Park. Or is that next Saturday? Do I have my dates mixed up?
This Saturday.
Is it this Saturday? Okay, this Saturday, 12 to 7 p.m. at Morrison Park. And it's the second year that they've had the celebration. Last year, it was an amazing success, and lots of great performances, and lots of vendors that, food vendors and craft vendors that are gonna be in the, in the area. So make sure that you stop by and check that out. And that is all I have. City attorneys report?
I have nothing additional.
Nothing for me.
Okay. And finally, councilmembers reports. We'll start down here with Councilmember Goodrich.
Okay, I'd like to thank all who worked to beautify Corleville. We had trees planted and all the cleanup efforts, and congratulations to Coach Lisa Bluder on her successful career, and congratulations to Coach Jan Jensen, who is a Corleville resident. She'll be the new women's basketball coach. Congratulations to North Liberty on their beautiful new city hall, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you. They already have a ray gun shirt, and I am going to purchase it when it is ready for, for Coach Jensen. Councilmember Peterson?
I don't have a lot tonight, but I would like to mention a couple things. I've had the opportunity recently to sit with some Corleville residents, and, you know, I want to say again how proud I am to be a part of Corleville community. They had nothing but good things to say with the single, the single stream recycling that's coming up, as well as the mayor cleanup, and, and I don't think any community around us offers the mayor cleanup and all the opportunities that we have to clean up our neighborhood. So I just wanted to say, you know, it's nice when I go out in the community and I hear nothing but good things instead of issues, so. But yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Vogelzang.
I, I too continually hear good things about Corleville, and particularly all the staff and all the employees that are, you know, this large organization runs, runs very well. I was here pretty early during the swap meet, the swap meet on Saturday, and just want to extend my thanks to everybody that was helping there. Just a well-oiled, well-oiled machine, it really, really runs well. And I too am looking forward to making space for a new garbage to recycle in my garage, so looking forward to that. That's all. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you. And last but not least.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to especially thank you for Mayor's Cleanup Week. About a week ago, somebody took out our mailbox post, so we had a good, good timing to at least get rid of that. But, so it came in handy, and it's always good to clean up. That's all I have.
Good. Excellent. Thank you. All right.
Mayor, there was one thing I forgot. I was gonna ask Scott to give a quick update on the interstate, because there's gonna be changes before our next council meeting.
Yeah, we need to know about that.
Are you ready for this?
I am ready. I mean, I'm ready. Let's hear it, let's hear it.
So today, we received confirmation from the Iowa DOT that the schedule right now is to open the new westbound 80 on-ramp. Early next Thursday morning, so May 23rd. But also, that same morning, we will open up the DDI to single lane movements. So traffic will be using the DDI in its true form. It won't be single lane to start, it won't be the full dual lanes, but drivers will be making the DDI movement as they travel north and south on First Avenue. So, next Thursday, May 23rd. The shift will actually take place late the evening of May 22nd into the early morning hours of May 23rd. So we are getting a press release out tomorrow, and that will also include at least one link to a diverging diamond interchange driving video that the Iowa DOT has produced. So you'll see probably more than one press release leading up to this traffic change, so.
So the bikes' trail will still stay?
Yeah.
I was hoping to get confirmation on that. I believe they intend to have that trail paved across the hotel frontage before then, and actually get trail users into the final third tunnel that gets you under the interchange altogether. So I should know that by the time we get the press release out tomorrow morning.
You got a long ways to go on that.
Well, they.
I don't even think it's graded yet.
They were out there with a dozer at about 6 o'clock tonight, so. So.
That would be sweet.
It won't surprise me if it, if the trail gets done, let's put it that way. But yes, it's, it, it is rapidly coming together, and next Thursday will be a, a big day.
How far ahead of schedule are they? I would anticipate somewhat.
You know, I think it's probably safe to say it's a matter of months ahead. I can't say for sure if it's one or three. Part of it is, there's a lot of overlap in the, the staging that was put on paper, because they've been able to work in areas and took, take advantage of, of great weather. So we're not ready to, to announce any newer final completion date yet, but certainly on track to, to where we will have all the permanent lanes fully usable before the end of this construction season. But yes, we do expect it to be sooner than December.
Great project.
Well, I would, given how people still struggle with roundabouts, I think it might be good to avoid that exchange for a week or so after.
I'll mention too, that the DOT learned additional lessons when the Tower Terrace Diverging Diamond Interchange opened, and so they're implementing some of those ideas with, with our Diverging Diamond Interchange opening.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
That's great news.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, and with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Goodrich. Could I get a second?
Aye.
Seconded by Vogelzang. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.